A call to order, good evening. This agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district website. Ms. Norma Avila.
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche sujete ha cambiado en el momento de la reunión. Cualquiera cambio que se anotara en el momento en que se realice nuevamente después de la reunión y en las actos de la junta pública que está disponible en el sitio web del distrito.
Thank you very much. We'd like to remind everyone that the translation and interpretation services are available during this meeting. If you need assistance, please let us know and we will be happy to accommodate you. Ms. Avila.
Nos gustamos recordar que los servicios traducción y interpretación están disponibles de tener esta reunión. Si necesita asistente, por favor, informanos y con gusto lo ayudamos.
At this time, we would just like everyone to stand for our pledge allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Denise Romero. As well, we'd like you to stay standing for Ms. Perino's moment of silence.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand, stay standing.
Two moments of silence this evening. One is for a former board member colleague, John Lawsonair. John was a type of individual you could disagree with him, you could argue your points, he argued his, and after that, you could be friends with him. In other words, you could, he could disagree without being disagreeable. John also, in addition to being on the board, he was very, very interested in agriculture. He raised a lot of his own produce. In addition to that, he was working at the time as, for the police department in a Florida community. The family moved south. One of his children, he had two children, one of his children was, is a electrician. All I can say, the other thing I can say about John is that he was a, he was very, very interested in the community, not only here but in Florida. As a matter of fact, at the time of his passing, he had a interest in running for a Board of Education C in the state of Florida, and he had a, quite a bit of support for that. The other moment of silence this evening is for Herman McZorin. Herman McZorin served over 20 years on our custodial staff, based primarily in the high school. I knew Herman. He was interested, very interested in family, in his church. He liked old records, and he had the reputation of a very hard worker, respected by staff and students. At the service for Herman, which was last Saturday, one of the, one of his fellow colleagues told a story that there was a day job available, and the person telling the story had children. Herman was next in line for the job. He refused that job so the, that the other person could take the job and be home during the evenings with the family. That's the kind of person Herman was. So please remember both John Lawsonair and Herman McZorin and your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. The mission of the enlarged city school district of Middletown, which will be read by Mr. Perino.
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports a diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moncharique, and roll call.
Mr. Estrada, Mr. Moore, Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Rett, Ms. Romero.
Yeah.
Mr. Tobiasin.
Yeah.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Pastor Williams.
Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Uh-oh.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Minutes, may I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 13th, 2025 as presented?
So move.
Second on that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. No administrative memorandum at this time? All right, may I have a motion to approve the instructional personnel memorandum 17B, number 1 to 14 as presented?
Second on that.
Excuse me, it's 1 to 15 as presented, excuse me. So we have a motion, we have a second.
Second, yep.
Yep, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, non-instructional personnel memorandum. May I have a motion to approve non-instructional personnel memorandum 17C, numbers 1 through 10 as presented?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Financial memorandum. May I have a motion to approve financial memorandum 17D, number 1 through 9 as presented?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
President, Williams, just want to point out, maybe Ms. Treading can elaborate on this, the disposal of the weight equipment, that's not going to waste, am I correct?
That is correct. We are, you know, happy to have a partnership with Parks and Recreation and the availability for us to give them some equipment that still has a little bit of life left to it.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Special services memorandum, may I have a motion to approve special services memorandum 16E, number 1, 2 as presented?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Change orders, may I have a motion to approve change orders 12F, number 1 as presented?
Second.
All right, I gotta move and I gotta second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve of the 2025-26 school year instructional calendar, may I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 school year instructional calendar? I have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second on that.
Thank you so much. Any discussion?
I don't know if there's anything that Ms. Treading has somewhere would like to comment on it, or...
Nope, I think it's pretty straightforward, you know, no additional added holidays or observances by the New York State Education Department or federal government for 25-26.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approve of emergency boiler number 2 and heating pumps repairs replacement at Truman Moon Elementary School.
Move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve emergency boiler number 2, so it's 8H and then 8.
You approve, you got a motion.
All right, thank you. All right, board member recognitions and community updates.
I'm up?
Yep.
All right, I'll be quick, I won't be too long. Several photos and things I'd like to discuss that took place over the last couple of weeks. This photo pretty, oh, this is really loud, sorry. This took place at Mont Hagan Middle School last week at the MLK Assembly that we discussed the Blueprint of Life. It was a outstanding event that took place. This actually continues into our New York's finest, ladies' finest basketball team where several of our current scholars are taking part in, and this is the future of the girls' basketball here in Middletown. We have pretty much a lot of the talent on the girls' end that are participating in 13U and 14U basketball. This is another great opportunity. We had Ashley and her sister Cindy come out and speak to the young ladies. It was actually a huge awakening for the younger athletes to see our number one New York State athlete here, Ashley, in women's basketball, come out and speak to them about their journey, what to expect on the AAU level, and just to what the travel basketball scene looks like. So they gave a nice little overall view and a little bit of a background themselves, and I think little things like this contributes to what they're going to do tonight when they win tonight. So I'm looking forward to being able to see them play next week. And this is just, we could scan through this really quickly, these are the some of the young ladies that have been selected to the team, and all of them are Middletown scholars. So it's definitely a great opportunity, and I'm finding myself back into the space of coaching, so I'm enjoying it and being able to be a leader for them moving forward. Sweet. And then later that evening, Thursday, the Middletown School District was recognized with many of our scholars for their excellence in school and in the community. These are just two young ladies that are, were honored from Mont Hagan. So just kudos to them and kudos to the entire school district and the school for having such an opportunity to be at the town of Walk Hill and be able to present this opportunity for them to be showcased and appreciated. So thank you. And that is my daughter in the blue, by the way. I was trying to, yeah, thanks. I think that's it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mr. Perino.
Okay, thank you so much. Just a shout out to our buildings and grounds and custodial staff, these are our first responders. And while we haven't had a nor'easter yet this winter, they, we've certainly had some nasty weather with quite a bit of ice. And, you know, these men and women, they have to travel these roads, and while some of us are having snow days or two-hour delays, they get here before 5:00. And to clean up the grounds and to salt and sand, so congratulations, bill your staff's doing a great job. Also, an announcement, Quanis Pancake Breakfast, right here this Saturday from 7:00 to 12:00. The Quanis Club does an excellent job, and I want to thank Kevin Witt, our community liaison, for publicizing this on our video boards. Nice, nice job, Kevin. Also, a shout out to Nicole Tagney, she got back to me, I do the IEPs, I had some questions, and she got right back to me on that. Camille Adamo, nice job on the family night, I'll talk about that later on, if not this evening, another evening. And also, your work on the orientation for the pre-K, that was very good. Nice evening, Liz Baller was there with, who's in the audience with all kinds of books to get the children reading early, good. And I just want, in the time I have left, can we put those slides on on Black History Month? I want to kind of wrap some of this up. Twin Towers, excellent programs, they had many, many different kinds of programs. If you go through those slides, they had not only dancing, they had readings, they had poetry, they had a, the step dancers from the high school were there, participating in the program. Other groups were there from outside, contributors, cultural groups spoke about culture, spoke about the experience, Black History. Very good evening, they didn't only do this, they had interdisciplinary projects with the staff members, the staff members there. So it was really, really a good effort. Fred Merritt and Nicole Brookins coordinated the program, but other individuals were also responsible, members of the faculty. And I want to say, I was over to Twin, and as everyone knows, we're doing a large construction project there. And the teachers, it's not easy, believe me, I've been through these construction projects in the district. It's not easy, but they're really, really doing an excellent job. They're getting around the bumps, and it's, they realize when we're done, it'll probably be the finest, I'm going to say, one of the finest middle schools in New York State. So I'm, my time's about up, and without me going into another subject, you can go on, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perino, Ms. Tobiasin.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Monday evening, I had the honor of attending the City of Middletown Common Council meeting along with Mr. Perino and Pastor Williams. That was the meeting that was held for the public hearing on the Good Cause Evictions. I had to say, it was a very informative and an enlightening meeting. The speakers that addressed either the pro or the con, right on point, and shared, as I said, knowledge that I learned a lot about rentals and, in the city of Middletown, and what they had hoped to accomplish. Other than that, that's my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tobiasin, Ms. Avila.
Good evening. A couple of things is, intermarials for our spring sports have started. I know flag football, you have baseball, softball, as well as lacrosse, girls' lacrosse, I believe boys as well. Intermarials have started from there. MBK had a successful food drive from February 18th to the 28th, and now they're doing a clothes drive, as well as that college classes, such as my college bio class is doing a segment of Women's History Month as well. And I think that's it, there's not a lot.
No, that was great. Thank you, Ms. Avila, Ms. Romero.
For Women's History Month.
Amazing things continue to happen in Twin Towers, as they do in all of our schools, but I happen to be the proud liaison of Twin. Twin Towers had an amazing time during the Black History Month assembly this week, celebrating with a variety of performances and activities. Scholars showcased their talents by recruiting, reciting, sorry, reciting poetry, while Twin Towers jazz band entertained the audience with multitude of songs. The high school's step team delivered an energetic performance, and they were honored to experience a professional African drumming performance by Kofi and Sokofa. The rhythmic beats and dynamic movement had scholars eager to get up and dance along with the performers. It was a vibrant and engaging celebration, and a great time was had by all. In addition to the assembly, the middle school computer science scholars had the exciting opportunity to visit Siena College, where Twin Towers was able to send 60 students to tour the campus, meet the deans, and learn from a panel of college students. The experience was provided, the experience provided valuable insight into college life and future academic possibilities. We were also incredibly proud of the Odyssey of the Mind team, who represented Twin at Saturday's competition. This is the first Odyssey of the Mind Twin Towers has had in over 10 years, and they were all beyond excited for their accomplishments. Their hard work, creativity, and dedication truly made an impact, and we all look forward to seeing what the team does next year. Twin Towers Middle School will kick off Midi's Love to Read Spirit Week on March 10th. During the week, scholars will read about young female activists and explore the importance of education and how they can become agents of change. The school will also introduce a month-long reading challenge through March and April, where scholars will deliver book talks to parents and educators. The participants will have the chance to win prizes and earn an invitation to the annual breakfast of readers. Thank you, that was a lot, but it was great.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. All right, Mr. Williams.
That's a hard act to follow, right there. I think I have some images to go up. So this is me, last week, myself and Mr. Moore were able to speak at the Black History Celebration at Mont Hagan Middle School. Kudos to the staff, Mr. Dominic Redonia, Mrs. Holler, and LeBron. The kids were so, like, just attentive and well behaved, and I had to ask them, I was like, did you guys get promised ice cream after this or something like that? Because they were just, they were good, right Drew? Drew, they were good. So then, you know, that's the packed house, they actually did a little curveball, so when I got there, I did my first presentation, I'm like, okay, you know, and I'm thinking it's in, but that was only one grade, so they did eighth grade first, and then they did seventh and sixth after that. So doubled up on it, I didn't mind it, you know? It was a great, great experience. Once again, the acts, the singing, the dancing, the, Mr. Phil Stewart got up there with his guitar and did some Langston Hughes, and it was, it was a really good, really good experience. It really set my day off, you know, with all the energy and positivity, and the way that the kids support each other as they're doing their performances. I remember in particular, last year, there was a student went up and kind of forgot the words to the song, and the kids jumped in and finished the song with the kid, like, it was just amazing. So they're doing an amazing job over there, I look forward to doing it again next year. I think this is my third year straight. So we can move on to the next. So this is one of the pitchers from Middletown Sports, we had our tryouts last Saturday here at the high school. Those some coaches gathered, I think we got more pitchers. That in particular, that's Sean Rosa, he's a Middletown graduate alumni. We love to get the alumni back in with our kids. I actually coached him, I'm going to date myself now, he's 22, I coached him about 10 years ago in flag football. So to have him come back and give back important to the kids was amazing. And a lot of the teachers knew him, and a lot of the athletes knew of him and his brother, Ramon, who just graduated from here last year, that's his older brother, so. More pitchers, we had about 90-plus athletes show up for the tryouts, which is amazing. And, you know, we call them tryouts, but, you know, you come, you're going to play. We're going to find something, you know, for you to do on the court. And, you know, we just don't like the, the, your cut narrative, right? We just don't, everybody has a place somewhere. So, you know, all the inclusion, inclusion is huge at this age with kids. We do from 6th grade to, I'm sorry, yeah, 10U to 16U are the ages we have. This is more, the energy in the, in the building was amazing. So, you know, we're happy with the turnout, and we'll be putting out about eight teams this year on the road, and we just want hard work and, you know, need them to dig in. And I think there's, so, that's a salute to the girls tonight, I don't know what the score is right now, but I'm assuming we're winning. 37-25, we're up 12. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Did it change?
Two minutes left, it was 39-33.
Oh, got a little closer. Got a little closer. Yeah, right? So that's just our image, that's Middletown Sports. Also, the registration for our tryout is still open until Sunday, March 9th. You can register online, we have a website, middletownsports.com, and that's what I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I just wanted to highlight the Middletown Parks and Recreation Department, and Ray Lynn, Salinas, Kelly, Sharon, and of course Nikki, who was over the boxing program. We have middle, just started Middletown Recreation Boxing Club, which is Coach Randy, Coach Danny, Coach Jose, and Coach Mark. That's taking place at the Middletown Parks and Rec, it's Mondays through Thursdays, 6 to 8. And I just want to thank the school district, they just chose when we were trying to put it together to donate some, the extra equipment that we were talking about tonight, and once again, that's just one Middletown again. So we're very excited about the program, we're very excited to have something for the kids to do, we're always excited to have the kids engaged in different things, you know? So that's pretty much all I have. Okay, so let's go into the opportunity to address the board. This board, the board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking. Speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. Ms. Avila.
Oportuna de digiría la juventud. La juventud decidieron una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentarios públicos por un periodo de hasta 40 minutos. A cada persona se le permite hasta cuatro minutos. No se permite la público discutir temas y/o asuntos que involucrar a una persona específica. Las personas deben registrar, firmar antes de hablar. Las personas no pueden serer su tiempo o a otras personas.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Anybody take this time to address the board? Go, Midi's.
Push it, I got it. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Mrs. Glickman, and I am the junior class advisor, and it is that time of the year where we are getting ready and gearing up for prom, and we're all excited. Our theme this year is Enchanted Fairy Gardens, and we're excited about that. Just to let everyone know that the prom packet is out into the junior and senior houses. This year, I just want to make sure, any parents out there watching, we have, the prom packet is arranged a little bit differently. There's a portion 1, and it's stapled together, and that's all the information that parents and students need to keep, all right? And then there's the portion 2 that you have to fill out and return to the house office, and then they're stapled together. So that way, it makes it easier for students to, you know, tear off the copy that they need to keep, they have all the information with the dates, and I'll have to show you that. Also, in our prom packet, we have the calendars. And for March... And for March, April, and May, with all the important dates as to when the packets will be pushed out, when we'll start selling tickets, which will be next week. And next Tuesday, we have parent-teacher conferences here. And our junior class, not only will be having the packets and information available at the table in the lobby, but we'll also be selling some refreshments as well. So come see us, junior class. Let's see. Do you need any important dates now, or you want to wait till you come and see it in the packet? Anybody want to know? All right, so I'll just tell you, the packets came out this past week. We'll start selling tickets next week on Thursday. And then also, on the eighth of April, let's see, nominees, oh, here we go. On the eighteenth of March, you get to, we'll push out a Google form for our students to start nominating their friends or themselves for the prom court. That's king, queen, prince and princess. So all the dates are here, when the Google forms will be pushed out, when they'll be expired, and so on. So make sure that you're, we'll have the prom packets available at the table in the lobby for the night of open, excuse me, parent-teacher conferences. So come out and see us. Thank you so much.
Well, good evening. I'm Paul Johnson, still. Coming before you today is a friend of the district. And I'm not intending to be dark, but I wanted to talk a little bit about mental health. So fact number one, I'm a chatty guy. That's pretty obvious. Fact number two, I have a special place in my, my brain for teachers and nurses. Not to belittle administrators and doctors, but I've always thought that teachers and nurses are the worker bees of their workplace. Fact number three, my day job allows me, if time and circumstance permit, to engage a little bit and ask people, how was your workday? Fact number four, I really got to get to know Lynn Ellis, who recently passed, who was a social worker in our district. She had an older dog, so we spent a lot of time together talking about her dog. And I would often close that interaction, how was your workday? And pretty much every time, she said, I wish there were more of me. Fact number four, five, whichever. I recently attended a six-hour workshop on mental health for veterinarians. And I thought, yeah, I'm pretty cool. But I did the six hours, and I heard about a life coach and a health coach, and self-medication, and stress. And I've given you a handout. Once again, not to be dark, but starting in 2014, there's a group called NOMV, Not One More Veterinarian, which is a suicide prevention organization for veterinarians. We won't go into the details of why. But my goal this evening is to pose two rhetorical questions, unless they're answered. One, do we have enough social workers? As Ms. Ellis's wish come true, that I wish there were more of me. And number two, I'm aware that you have certain services available to the staff, but do we ever make any formal workshop-type event? When I ask people, how was your workday? The typical response from both a teacher and a nurse, once again, I'm not a pollster, silence, and then a little bit of moan. And then, well, what's up? And then, teachers in particular will often articulate, many of them, at least in that sixty-second conversation, are kind of in survival mode. And maybe for their workday, classroom management overtook the educational process. The nurse, well, how many patients would you be able to treat effectively? Fourteen. Well, how many do you do on your shift? Twenty-one. Teacher, how many students could you educate effectively? Maybe fifteen, twenty? How many do you have? Twenty-five, twenty-six? And my closing question is, is this the job you envisioned when you went to school for this? And obviously, I'm reporting to you that more up than not, the answer I receive is no. Once again, I'm not a counselor. I'm not a social worker. I'm just a guy. But I feel I wanted to bring that back to you. And if we're A-OK, then asked and answered. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Sorry about that noise. My name is Aliyah Castillo. I'm a community member. I'm also, my daughters, all of my children graduated from Middletown School District. My daughter is currently a student in Middletown School District. So I come to you with deep concern about what's taking place with DEI and the state that we're in regarding President Trump, and the threat of taking away federal funding. My question is, does Middletown School District have a plan? Will there be, I wrote some things down, sorry if I'm looking down. Will there be restructuring or revisiting of current DEI programs that are in place? And if not, is that a thought? Is that something that you guys have thought of doing? In addition to that, sorry. If federal funding is taken away, how would that affect our school district? I'm an educator, as I told you, over twenty years. So a lot of what Dr. Johnson, he took care of my daughter before she died. So a lot of what he said, it resonated with me. I left the school system to pursue my own nonprofit program, which is teaching adolescents life skills, because I felt that was imperative for them to learn. And I'm currently working at Middletown Library with this program, starting at the end of March. It's called Thriving Beyond the Classroom, just so you know. I would love to bring this program into the high school in September. But this is important to me because these programs, such as my, my program, our students need it, believe it or not. So I want to make sure that there are things in place to keep these programs afloat if, in fact, federal funding is pulled. I know our Attorney General has stated that will not happen. A lot of things were stated that this will not happen, but things are happening. So I want to know if we're being proactive, because I would prefer that our school district is proactive and not reactive. We have to be one step ahead of the game, maybe ten steps ahead of the game. So that is my question to you. I also wanted to put out there my program that I have. I would love to, as I said, work with Middletown School District. I'll put my name here, my information. Hopefully, I'll get an answer to, if not all of my questions, some of my questions. And you guys have a good evening.
Thank you, yes. Superintendent will be in communication with you sometime this week.
Thank you.
And no letters to the bill, to the board? Okay. All right, let's go, Middletown. Thank you. All right, turn the meeting over to our superintendent. What'd you say, forty-four thirty-nine? Oh, forty-four thirty-nine. All right. Forty-four thirty-eight. My bad. All right, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Ms. Amy Creedon.
Great, thank you very much. Always a wonderful opportunity to get to have our programs present, share all the exciting things that are going on inside of each of our buildings. And so I'm gonna invite the elementary team, the large elementary team, to come on up and share their mid-year impact report on their legacy plans.
Come on. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, and Assistant Superintendent Tuttel. The elementary team is so proud to highlight for you all the work that we have been doing this year in our school buildings. Our legacy plans were created to align with your goals for the district, the superintendent's goals for the district. In addition, in planning our work for the year, we spent a lot of time considering feedback from the community, the feedback we collected from the scholars and from the staff on our seven C surveys. That was incredibly helpful to all of us. So our plans were intended to align all of your goals and all of the feedback from the community and bring those together into actions that we would implement in the school. With your support and the support of the district administrative team, with whom we could not have done any of this work, we feel that we've made great strides towards creating the school community and environment that you, our scholars, our community, our families, and our staff would like to see. We hope that you enjoy this window into all of the amazing things that are happening in Middletown's elementary schools this year. We have a video for you to watch, which will highlight for you a lot of what's happening in the school buildings. So please enjoy.
So the Legacy Plan is a plan that we have worked together as administrative staff.
It really digs into the multiple areas that will drive student achievement, drive more community involvement, bring value to all that the district has to offer.
We look at survey data, academic data.
We are working really hard to make changes.
To put in place some incentives for scholars.
To reach families, to empower students.
We have some new programs that we're doing in the building which are supporting them.
Our lab is like a mobile planetarium. It is a chance for students to experience constellations, planets. Once you step into that dome, you forget that you're actually in school. It was an amazing experience as they watch the sky change. They love it. And, you know, it's not something that they normally get to see. It is like an on-campus school trip. How amazing is it that a planetarium can come to your school?
The wheel, what is the wheel? The wheel is, it's a huge phenomenon here. Each week, we display a big screen of a wheel of names. If you come to school every day the prior week, right? Your name's entered into the wheel, and we'll spin the wheel, we'll play music. Once your name gets selected, we call you up. We take their photo. They get acknowledged on the morning announcements the following day. They're super excited about it, and they get to choose a prize as well. We have a prize card. When we do this at this level, and they understand the importance of coming to school and showing up and being here and learning, it carries over.
During our monthly student award assemblies, we recognize students who have a hundred percent attendance to recognize the students who are here every day on time. In addition to the students, we also recognize the classrooms who have ninety-five percent attendance or better. We make the assembly super engaging and fun. We have a cheer team that comes out at the beginning.
Good job!
So an AAC device is an Augmented Alternative Communication Device. And what that does is helps our scholars be able to communicate. Some of our scholars receive a device when they have some verbal language, but it could be hard to understand. They may have no verbal language at all. So it serves as a voice output device for them to be able to express their wants and needs and to engage in the academic curriculum. We have had scholars that come to us primarily non-speaking, and with intensive use of the device over the first few years are now using more verbal language. So they no longer need to use the device. They're able to communicate just fine without any additional supports.
The World Read Lab Day was where we took part in being mystery readers in the classroom. Administrators, the principals, assistant principals, instructional leaders, superintendent, board members popped into classrooms with the book, and the students were read to. This was an opportunity to show the students that jumping into a book can take you to places that you've never been to before.
We have this exciting Spanish language arts program called Caminos. And Caminos is a K to five Spanish language arts curriculum. And the goal is for them to make connections between Spanish literacy and English literacy using authentic Spanish texts. The students and the teachers are absolutely loving the program. They love interacting with curriculum and materials in their home language.
We have what's called Snippets of Kindness. What we like to do is for our scholars, when we see them do an act of kindness, we will get their name, we will write down the act of kindness on a piece of paper. And that piece of paper with that snippet of kindness will be taped up in our main hallway, where we have hundreds of snippets of kindness. Scholars absolutely enjoy getting a snippet. They work so hard.
Too Good for Jobs and Too Good for Violence, it's a program that we believe in. Kids in the age of elementary school that are transitioning to middle school undergo some really major changes in their growth and development. We have found that this program helps give them some extra tools in their toolbox to be more successful as they make those really important decisions, going from young children to those young adults where they get put in situations that maybe they're not used to.
So CKLA is a structured literacy program that builds language comp, where social studies and science is integrated through instruction. Students actually have an experience of going through history, learning about different concepts in science, and actually making it practical and bringing it to life. The students are so engaged in the reading. And just for students to build that background knowledge, they're able to do project-based learning activities based on their experience through the content that they're learning.
Foundations is one of our early literacy reading programs. It's teaching the foundational skills of reading. We have two programs at the lower grades. One is Hegarty, the phonological awareness program, so that we're teaching our kids sound. And our phonics program, which is Foundations, is teaching letters and sounds and how they go together. And so we're teaching our kids how to read, how to put words together and take them apart.
Been overwhelming and really, like, makes my heart smile to hear their feedback as far as what they're learning, their knowledge content.
AM Intramurals gives our scholars an opportunity to come in in the morning and participate in something that makes their heart happy, interact with their friends, learn something new.
It sets them up to be eager for the classroom.
Gets them ready, you know, to learn.
Here in Middletown City School District, we start our mornings off with a pre-fuel. Pre-fuel consists of their breakfast of the day, just so that they can get started on a full stomach. We like to get our students started off with a healthy breakfast before they start their day.
Yesterday, it was our one-hundredth day of school, and it is an exciting time for students. We get to celebrate with our students their accomplishment of a hundred days of getting smarter. The teachers, along with the students, create activities around the number one hundred and, you know, bring in families to do these activities with their students. We get to dress up as a hundred, you know, being a hundred days old. It just really becomes a great opportunity to... It just really becomes a great opportunity to show all that the students have learned and bring the families in to take part in it.
Multicultural event is a day for scholars to research and present on different cultures and countries that they've been learning about. So the families come in and then they're invited into the classroom. And usually there's a presentation to start on the country that we've been working on. Sometimes it's a book, sometimes it's a presentation, sometimes it's, you know, a dance or something that they've been doing. It's great for the Middletown community especially because we have such a diverse set of learners and families. They're really getting to learn about our world and our community, and then they get to take that knowledge and they get to share it with their families.
So you see us all up here laughing and smiling. You know, I know you hear a lot about the challenges in schools, but we absolutely love what we do and I think it comes through in that and in the smiles on our faces when we're watching it. And we're like, oh, there's our kids. And that's really not even everything, but you would be here for a really long time if we put everything in the video.
We started mapping it out, it just got longer and longer.
Yeah, so we are happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Yes, questions or comments? We'll start from this side. Mr. Moore.
Someone that actually worked in, first, who put the video together? Was it we did? Who put the video together? Kudos to them. Someone that has... For me, I worked in, I worked for the MBA in our production many years ago, and that just brought back a great idea for us of storytelling. It just shows how much the district has grown. For me, being up here four years and, you know, if I would have seen that video, obviously it would have been an eye-opening experience and see how much work and dedication that you guys have for the entire student body. But kudos to you guys for all the hard work that you do. Trust me, we know it's not easy. And just continue to, you know, understand your why and continue to, you know, follow it. And it definitely comes out in the videos, but also in your day-to-day. So thank you again.
Mr. Perino.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mrs. Driscoll, it appears that you really love the students and love being with the students, you and your team from what you've, from what you've said. You have a good administrative staff here and you have a good faculty. I don't think, unfortunately, some people might not appreciate what you do, but I certainly believe that around this table, we all appreciate, we all appreciate your efforts. With these activities, do you find that disciplinary referrals have gone down in the various buildings?
Yeah. I mean, I can speak for Maple Hill, yes. We have seen a reduction.
Yeah, absolutely. Same for Presidential. There's a more conscious effort on the Acts of Kindness and our Star Student Awards. They know the expectations as far as how to earn an award, and it's a common theme through all of our classrooms.
At the Onyx, we connect on to these programs as well, being part of Maple. We find that, A, the students being able to participate and looking forward to that is huge, and for us, the opportunity for communication building and regulatory opportunities is tremendous.
I know that, that that's a good, good thing happening. And with all these reading programs, the phonics programs, and perhaps adopting a new, a brand-new reading program itself, do you see us, the foundational skills, do you see us having a bit better results on the tests and the, during the next set of tests coming up?
I certainly think that the programs are really supportive of the scholars doing better. We have, is it our third, where's Liz? Is it our third year, Liz and Tiffany? For Foundations? So those, it takes a little time for those scholars to get up into the testing grades. I happened to be in a fifth-grade classroom today where the scholars were having a discussion around, they were finishing reading a fifth-grade version of Don Quixote, and it was amazing. I mean, the conversation that the kids were having, they were so engaged, everybody's hand was up. It was really phenomenal. So I feel really good and see a lot of promise in the programs that we are investing in. And I'm really hopeful that we're going to begin to see gains once we're implementing them widely and those scholars who have those foundational skills are moving up in the grade levels as well.
Lastly, I know that this current year, we've had some administrative changes at the school with people changing schools. And I talked to some of your members before the meeting began, and I know I talked to Mika Harris, and she appears to enjoy being at Presidential, and I would suspect that the staff members also feel the same way, I would hope. And thank you so much.
Brooke, would you like?
Well, you were the next, I was going to speak. We had a change at Maple Hill from Carter School, and I know you're doing well and you do a nice job with all the bulletin boards up there.
She is our bulletin board queen. I personally feel the changes have been really positive. Of course, we miss Ms. Harris, we loved her, but Brooke has been an amazing addition. I think all is going well, so yeah.
I think just being here tonight, you show how positive everyone feels about their positions and about the students. And as we all know, students come first in this district. So thank you so much for what you do.
Mr. Bison.
Thank you. Tracy, I'm not trying to embarrass you, but I like the new look.
I sprung for you. Like before I came, you said EDI bust out and I was on it.
I just want to say that it's evident that our students are very happy and enjoying the new programs that we have, but I think it's also very rewarding to look at our teachers and see the smiles. And yes, we have our hard days, or I had my hard days, as I'm sure that all of you have, but it's the rewards and it's the reflection of those days. And please believe me, I admire everything that every single one of you do and put into your day. It's a challenge, you know? And I've often said, you don't know the student that has crossed your classroom door. Which students will be doctors, lawyers, perhaps even a president or a congressman? So I aspire and I thank you for your efforts in bringing the best out in our students.
Mrs. Vela.
I really loved the presentation. I was like drawn into it. But just like seeing like all those programs, all me coming here like fourth grade and I like see like the, like the fourth and fifth like programs, and just seeing the kids still having fun and dare and all that, I, like, it touches me because it's like there is still something that I've remembered from like six, seven years ago, and it's like they're still loving it to this day. It's really a joy. And it's like the little things that, like that, like the notes, the nice, the act of kindness and all. It's just like touching because sometimes like the kids feel like only the negative or the bad students are just the ones that are getting the attention, but no, there's like little things that really brings it out and it helps students because it's the, it's really the little things that they're going to keep in their heart. And I was seeing like the dare, I'm like, oh my gosh, like I remember still doing that and all. I just like love it. It's like it brings a smile to my face, like everything. And it's, it's with like you guys as educators and administrators as well, it's the, you guys like helping and making sure like the students are there and they're taken care of and they're at least having fun and learning because you can't have fun and learning if, you know, you guys as the adults are not bringing it to them. And it's like grateful because they're going to need it coming up to like high school, middle school and all. Thank you.
Ms. Romero.
Amazing video. Great job to you all, and thank you for everything that you do.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah, that video was awesome. It's, it's, it's so great to see the presentations from the years prior and everything come to fruition. Because I remember you guys talking about certain things and then to see it in that video. And the kids, just so many smiles and the good energy. And K through five is such an impressionable time in the kids' lives, and they have high energy. I, I, like, I know, I know. So I had the opportunity last year, Mrs. Driscoll, I came in and spoke to the fifth graders about the transition going out. And, you know, I'm sure any of us would love to come to the schools and, and be able to talk to the kids going on from fifth to sixth. It's a big jump. It's a big transition. I really salute all teachers, all admins. K through five is definitely, definitely a challenge, I know. And I was loving to see the, you know, the kids that are having problems speaking, right, nonverbal, and to still be able to express themselves is amazing. Like, technology is amazing.
The results have been dramatic.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It opens up a whole new world. And that, I want to go, I want to see personally the, what did you call it? The globe, the?
The Star Lab.
That is, in, like you said, you're taking, you're still in school, but you're somewhere else. Right? A lot of our kids, you know, may not, may not be able to travel to a museum or, you know, if it's not with the school, but that is just, there's a lot of good things going on. I just want to salute you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. That was excellent presentation. Wow. At my job, we have this thing where we say is, would you want a family member to be a resident here? And based on what you're doing, I, I definitely emphasize and encourage my family members or my grandbabies to be there, which one of them is in there, to be in that type of climate, that type of culture, that type of temperature. Because once again, we see the smiles and we see the energy from everybody. So that's just a culture. It's not just the, the young people, it's also the educators, it's also the security, it's everybody. You could just see it from everybody. And that creates just a culture from even, and it's not just the educational piece is what you're emphasizing, emphasizing the kindness and recognizing the kindness, encouragement. We're dressing up and in 100 days, and then you could even see the family members are smiling. Like, that's, that's what the village is about, you know? Because in, in, in life, you're just going to have ups and downs, it's part of it. But when you have a healthy culture, you get through it. And that's what you've all created, and I commend you for the job that you are doing. It's an amazing job, and kudos to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd just like to take a moment to recognize, because we're all going to leave here feeling very warm and fuzzy after all your kind words, but none of it would be happening without you, the Board, supporting all of the programs. So we want to take a moment to recognize that and express our appreciation for all that you do, the time that you dedicate, and everything that the superintendent and the Board have done to make all of that happen, because it is creating a truly remarkable environment in our elementary school. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
So we will have the Star Lab at Experience Our Programs on May 9th, so you will get a chance to experience that. Just want to do a quick plug for that. So good evening, Board of Education, Vice President Williams, Superintendent Creedon, Board of Education trustees. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to discuss some updates around our universal pre-kindergarten program. So research shows that children that attend a pre-kindergarten program are more prepared for kindergarten, less likely to repeat a grade, more likely to graduate from high school, and earn a higher income when into the workforce. Given the benefits of pre-kindergarten, we are fortunate to receive funding from New York State, which allows us to partner with local daycare providers and allow children to attend pre-kindergarten at no cost. In order to be eligible, children must be for, on or before December 1st, 2025, and reside in the Middletown City School District. We provide both full-day and half-day programs. Our half-day programs are two and a half hours, our full-day programs are five hours. The programs operate 180 days of the school year. Families are responsible for providing transportation. Over the last few years, we have made a great effort to increase our full-day offerings. This year, we partner with 11 providers and have one UPK classroom here at Maple Hill Annetts. We have 41 children in half-day programs and 224 in full-day programs for a total of 255 children who are able to benefit from early learning. To register for the UPK program, it's by appointment only. Please call central registration at 845-326-1300 to make an appointment. Registration will take place Monday through Friday from March 17th through March 28th at Maple Hill Annetts at the Truman Moon School. Appointments are from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and will last about half an hour. The child does not have to be present for the appointments. So that number again is 845-326-1300. Every year, we open up to our community to participate in program as provider. Any local daycare providers interested in applying for the UPK program for the 25-26 school year are asked to submit a request for proposal. Proposals are available by contacting Joe Kelly at 845-326-1162. Proposals are due May 2nd, 2025. Applicants will be notified no later than May 23rd, and contracts will be presented to the Board of Education on June 5th for approval. And I just want to close by just thanking our providers. So again, this year, we work with 11 providers, and then we have one program in district. Just want to thank them for their continued partnership and their support with early learning.
Thank you very much. Questions, concerns? Yes, Mr. Perino.
Mitch, yeah, I attended one of the sessions, the orientation session, and very, very professionally done, organized by Assistant Superintendent Ms. Adama. I know Liz Bull and Tiffany Hall were there with various materials, books to get the, again, to get the children reading. Also, there were a number of the providers were there, and it was just a nice evening. Snacks were provided for the, those in attendance, and turned out nice. You know, I just want to say one other thing. Ms. Adama, she just goes about her business in a very, very professional kind of a quiet man and gets the job done. I mean, that's part of your, part comes from the, your military experience, which you were, you commanded a ship, correct?
I wasn't quite there, I was on the way.
Just about, though, right? Nice job, Camille.
And just to elaborate, we had two different events last month. The first one was for families to tell them about the program and tell them about the process. Then the one, then we had one last week, which was for the scholars that are currently in the program. And we had a presentation by Cornell Cooperative on healthy eating. And then we had Barbara Recio, who did a demonstration with science where they made a paper towel rainbow. And Tiffany Hall and Liz Bull were also here to support on that event. So it was, you know, a great, thank you. We had about 60 families between the two at each event.
Mr. Bison.
Couple of questions on the UPK enrollment. Are we set with only a certain amount that we can take? Are we set with only a certain amount that we can take each year?
Yes, so the state will release an allotment each year, that'll tell us how many slots we're able to provide. If we maximize that allotment, we get the full allocation. This year, we are about half a slot off of the full allocation, which is closer than we've been in a while.
And not to put you on the spot, but I see that our full-time, full-day has increased significantly since 2021 to present day. Can you point a finger at what you think attributed to that?
Yes, so what, a couple of things, just working with the providers to figure out what the barriers were. And so one of the things that we started this year was we provided, through our food nutrition department, providing meals, so that's inside the grant, because as a full-day program, you have to have meals, you have to provide a lunch and a snack. Some of our programs don't have a kitchen, so that was, that was one big barrier. So just being able to offer that support, and then also working with the providers to figure out what resources they need. But that, I think those were, those were two of the big ones that we were able to do. Some of our families still like half-day programs just because of schedule, but we're finding that more families are requesting the full day, and it gives the scholars a better, you know, more, more learning. So we're leaning more towards those programs.
And the last one. Is there any way, or have we been tracking kids that, students that were in the pre-K, universal pre-K program, and then became students in kindergarten, first grade? Has there been any tracking on the significance of the educational experience that they receive in universal pre-K?
Yes, they, they perform better because they're used to the environment, from being in school, the routine. The programs that were discussed earlier with foundations and Haggerty, we started last year working with those programs with our providers. So our kids are coming in from the pre-K into the kindergarten classrooms with that background. So, and then we work with them a couple of times a year, Professional Development Days, where we're going over math, STEM. We talk about language acquisition. So we're doing all that support with them, so that when they come in, so we are seeing, they do perform, you know, better because they've had time to make that transition to, to school.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Excellent presentation, thank you very much. My comment is, happy to have my grandbaby in the school, and I have the other one coming next year. We already signed up. So thank you so much, full-time, you're not playing. No questions. That was it, thank you so much.
Ms. Creedon?
Good evening, thank you so much for giving us an opportunity this evening to begin what will be the first of multiple presentations that we will do on the budget proposal that we presented to the board for adoption and then presentation, presenting to the community. Tonight, we're going to cover administrative, capital, benefits, and additional budget items. So just a reminder that when we sit down to plan for the budget, I just wanted a visual so that the board could see that all of the items that we will talk about over the course of all of the budget presentations are directly connected to the board's goals, which align to our strategic plan, and then align directly to my goals. And just a reminder that we always use as our grounding force our vision and our mission, and valuing the four components that are the foundation of our work, which is collaboration, trust, growth, and equity-focused. So we really began a few years ago, a few budget cycles ago, digging into the budget development process and collaboration very differently. Starting very early, it's almost as soon as the May budget concludes that we start to dig in and begin to think about what the following year's budget will look like. And this is a way that we ensure that we're not just planning for, you know, one year, but more of a strategic look at many years out. So in collaboration with Central Office, these are all of the many, you know, corners of the community and school district that we engage with in order to get feedback on priorities, strategies, and supports that are needed as part of the budget development process. So again, tonight, you are going to be seeing administrative, benefits, capital, and additional items related to our five-year capital outlook. And so that just shows you the percent of the budget that we will be speaking about tonight in totality. When we sit down and look at budgeting, there are many assumptions that we take into consideration. This just lists a few of them. These are things that we don't have a whole lot of control over in terms of, you know, the consumer price index isn't something that this district controls. The estimated cost for ERS and TRS, those are contractual obligations that we have. And so those are things that we use as the framework for our budget development. Those help us, again, to be looking at using the taxpayers' money in a responsible manner, but also ensuring that we're not planning one year at a time, but more about five years out. Just want to call to your attention here that, you know, one of the biggest things that will be points of discussion as we go through this budget cycle, and it's been a part of the local news cycle and the national news cycle. And so we want to highlight here that foundation aid continues to be an area where we're digging in and ensuring that Middletown is represented adequately, not only in that discussion, but in the result of that discussion. And so this year, based on the governor's run in January, we are slated to get, you know, a 2% increase to our foundation aid. And so, you know, while that is encouraging, that there is continued effort to provide us with aid for our programming through foundation aid as one of those revenue sources, we continue to acknowledge that there are unfunded or underfunded mandates. And so last year, we highlighted a big topic of discussion was electrified buses. And that still remains a hot topic in conversation, but we want to continue to identify that while Middletown, our enrollment is what we would describe as stable. We don't have necessarily a high increase in enrollment or a decrease, we're pretty stable, we're pretty flat. However, our high-cost student is an area where we have continued to see, you know, incredible growth. And so one of the things that unfunded or underfunded mandates doesn't account for, two examples here are the extensive related services that are provided to scholars who are special needs, and there is no aid to accommodate for that, as well as students who we are required to provide services for after they test out of being classified as an English language learner. We're still required to provide services but don't receive aid for that. So these are just some examples of the things that we're considering as we're building the foundation for the budget.
Good, thank you, Ms. Creedon. So just go back to the slide a little bit, when we look at the foundation aid, the legislator has come up, or the governor's come up with a minimum of 2% for each district, so there's, no one will receive less than 2%. So for us, that's about a $3 million increase in foundation aid. And if you go to number eight, or number seven, you can see that we have contractual increases every year of over $8 million. So we're already in the negative before we start. So the administrative component of the budget is made, made up of Board of Education, the meeting, district clerk, central administration, which is the superintendent line, that is not the salary, the finance department, which consists of auditing, treasurer, purchasing. We have tax collection, we have legal fees, we have the personnel department, records management, public information services. As you go through the line items, you can see most of them are increasing, right? And that's just contractual salaries. We're not adding any more equipment, we're not adding more supplies, we actually try to cut in some of those areas, try to balance the budget this year. So some, in some areas, you'll see like treasurer, that salary went down, that's because we have a retirement coming. So you'll see a little bit of negative in that line. So, and then, again, this is our proposed budget when we go through the first round of it. And it's amazing how many things change, how many people, we need a new priority or something else has come in from the state, or we want to implement this program. So the, the information may change a little bit when we get, by the time we get to the final budget for adoption. A couple of other things associated in here is central processing, which is the technology department. We have BOSI's administrative costs, we have BOSI's capital costs in here, curriculum and development supervision. We have regular supervision, which is all the principals and admins in all the buildings. We have special supervision over special education, research and planning. So we have, majority of the administrative things are things that are at the administrative level with staff and how we, and how that all functions for us. So this year, our proposed budget is up about 9.3%, up about 25 million, 25.9 million. And that's really usually about where we are with the administrative budget, because it's such a small component of the bigger overall budget. So it always looks like it's, the 9% looks like it's a large change, but in reality, it's not. And it's really just contractual items inside there. So that's the administrative part. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about the benefits. And we talked a little bit about ERS, how that inflates every year, TRS, how that inflates. And these are basically just based on salaries. So every time someone's salary increases, the amount of money that we owe to TRS increases. So it's, everything, social security increases, everything just keeps exponentially going up. So we have workers' comp insurance, we have life insurance for some administrative groups in social, social security. We have unemployment insurance, disability insurance. And our big one that keeps growing is the hospital dental and vision insurance for the district. And then we also have union welfare benefits. And then for our proposed budget for this year for the benefits, about a little bit over $54 million, an increase of 3.8% represents that for, and again, this is our proposed budget. Hopefully waiting for the, the state to finalize the budget before we go to the final. And then when we talk a little bit about the capital, we have a lot of things that happen inside operations and maintenance. These are all the building, the grounds, snow removal, lawn care, painting, roofing, trucks. Anything that has to do with building, health, and safety is inside the operations and maintenance. We have school resource officers, we have eight of those. That's up just about, almost 3% contractual salaries this year. In the past two years, we've done security swipes in all the buildings, we're finishing the high school, and we're going to allocate some funds to do Twin Towers when that comes online next year, at the end of next year. So then we also have what we pay for all our construction with, we have our serial bonds. This is something that we have to pay every year, the principal, we have interest on that. We also have energy performance contracts, we have bands, which is the bond anticipation notes, and that's when you borrow before you actually go to bonding. So these are all the requirements we have, and we actually get more money each year from state aid to pay for this part of it. So we're, we're kind of in the plus on that side, so that's, that's kind of a very good positive for us there. So overall, our whole capital budget, a little bit over 36 million, up 6.6%. Again, in there, we buy trucks, we buy anything that we need for buildings and grounds, and also support health and safety. So as we move on a little bit. Back in 2021, we did approval for Twin Towers, the project over at Twin Towers. And based on a New York State facilities planning audit, when we did the funding sources, they're recommending that we actually transfer the $9.5 million into the capital reserve, because it was never transferred when we did the budget in 2021. So we're just, we have the money, we just need to allocate it into the budget this year. So that's based on what they recommended. After we went through significant audits, significant interviews with them and reviewing the budget, this is what they recommend us to do. So Ms. Creedon talked a little bit about strategic five-year capital investment plan. We talked about this back in 2022. The architects came in, gave us a whole list of things and ideas of where we need to go and what to do to improve some of the building infrastructure. And then in 2023, we did a building condition survey. We had the architects here again, and we, and we presented that. Based on, in the building condition surveys were really good. Some of them, we need some health and safety upgrades, so we're working on those. A little bit about why we want health and safety spaces with our building aid to maximize it. So our building aid rate now is 89.9%. So for every dollar we spend, we get back 89 cents. So if you went and bought a cup of coffee for a dollar, and then somebody gave you 11 cents, it's a pretty good bargain, right? So we're going to look at maximizing some capital projects this year through the budget. One of them is over at Twin Towers. When we had the voter-approved outdoor recreation area, you can see in the highlighted red, we had like a small little synthetic turf area and another little hard surface play area, right? So after looking at that and then envisioning what the field could actually look like, we look at the possibility of putting a bigger turf field there with multiple uses, where we have like a track around the perimeter, we have some recess area, gym space. The baseball field will stay where it is, it looks like it has, we have soccer and lacrosse. We also have some sensory area designed and designated for students. So this is in addition to the budget that we would request. What we have now is some of these ideas that we're presenting. We don't have all of the finalized numbers for you yet, but we will have that for the next meeting and discuss how we're going to finance, how we could finance all that. So when we look at William A. Carter, we're looking at some upgrades, some restrooms. A lot of the elementary schools need restroom upgrades because of the use, they're constantly being used, and the doors are coming off the hinges, and Mr. Bartlett's constantly telling me we need money for door hinges and stuff. And so, all right, so we decided to go through this, the 2020 capital facilities plan and say, hey, what can we do and to get all the buildings up, up to date and with health and safety? So we go through some of these items, we're looking at restroom upgrades, some hallway replacements, some playground shade structure at Carter, and some asbestos removal. Now, when we talk about aid, we talk about 6.4 million, we're going to get 89% back on that aid. So we'll, we'll go through all that numbers next time. That's William A. Carter. We have Maple Hill, we have restroom upgrades, classroom sink areas in all the classrooms need enhancing. We need a security alarm out there, looking at library media upgrade, cafeteria ceiling, cafeteria acoustics. Okay, I know Mr. Scully's back here yelling. So there, there's the cost of that. Then we go over to Presidential, we have to do some upgrades over there. Some of the restrooms had sheet rock, that's getting damaged, getting kicked, so we would like to replace that and put tile in there. We need to upgrade the district-wide air conditioning room with the AC. And then there's an old pavilion structure out there, that's a historic value, and that we need to, we would like to kind of remove it from the premises. So we're going to look at that, and then some additional play shade structures there at Presidential. At Mont Hagen, replace the fire alarm, we need a security alarm, and then looking at a library media upgrade over there as well. We also have the high school, which we'd like to do some work here down the hallway, because the sheet rock gets kicked and damaged a lot, so they're constantly fixing it. So we would like to put some tile on there so it doesn't get damaged. Downstairs in the main floor lobby, re-tile the whole floor in the event center. Need some electrical switch gear in a couple of areas. The auditorium needs a HVAC unit replacement, some masonry restoration, and the Veraldi wings. The auditorium needs to be painted and the ceiling, and the high school cafeteria needs an HVAC upgrade as well. So basically, what we were talking about a little bit, when I was giving an example of, you know, the, the coffee, if we spend $1 million on something, we get $899,000 back over 15 years. So basically, it pays when you bond, the money comes in each year and pays for what we owe each year, it pays our debt. So basically, at the end of the day, there's no money out of our pocket to do those buildings, right? We actually, actually made, we made money on this. So that's what we're looking to do, we'll talk about this a little bit more in depth at the next meeting. We just wanted to present it tonight and just let you aware of what we're thinking. So we've had some community engagement and informational sessions. These are the dates that we've had, we have one coming up April 22nd, and that'll be just a budget recap. And honestly, we don't really get many people, and none at all for the most part. Honestly, we don't really get many people and none at all for the most part to actually join us. But April 22nd will be our budget recap. The next thing that we have up is instructional programming on March 20th. And then of course, in May 20th is our budget election vote. And meet the candidates night is May 6th, Tuesday, May 6th, I believe here. Here's some of our legacy makers in action. And then again, our instructional program is next meeting. Any questions? No, you can ask. I have Mr. Bartlet here, if you have any construction questions.
Questions, comments? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I'll go quickly. Especially during the times that we're in right now, and I know that we are experiencing a potential reconstruction of the Board of Education at the federal level. I would love to see if we have any future grants that we can definitely look into to definitely replace some of that particular federal aid that we may potentially lose. I love the fact that we forecast five, you know, five years out. And someone that loves to forecast, definitely thinking along those lines. We do have a big school district here and with the programs, I will, I would definitely not want to see us lose any traction on where we are. So if there's any that you may come up with or have seen, I would love to find out where we are with that.
Yeah, so just a little bit about that funding. So I was, I think I wasn't in district that day and Ms. Crean called me in a panic about where's the money going? And I'm like, well, I don't know because I'm not in district. But the one thing that we've always done since I've been here and my predecessor before me is that we have allocated money in case of that situation. Because we're always afraid of that the title money could go away or something and then. So basically what we, what we went through, the exercise was 82 people would have been affected with the salaries. So it doesn't mean they all lost their jobs, it just means like 20%, we pay 20% of salary here, 50% here. So 82 people would have been touched and we would have had to think come up with $6 million like to, to finish, to make them whole. So and we believe in, in our budgeting and what the board has always approved in the community, we would have that money to sustain whatever we needed to do. It's really just a matter of just allocating and, okay, we don't buy trucks now, we're going to do that. We got to make sure staff and the programs run. So that's really what we're always looking at.
Mr. Perino?
Looking at these upgrades and improvements, I'm sure these are going over with. If you look at all our buildings, they're in excellent condition. And by doing these upgrades and preventative maintenance, we maintain and we go forward with the buildings. I, I don't think the, the public quite understands a band, the bond anticipation notes, which we not only get 89%, but over a period of time, the, these projects will cost almost nothing. Am I correct on that?
And is something that you, so we go out to voter, we want a voter approval on a project. So when that project starts, we have what they call a band, a bond anticipation note, it's called a ban. So we're borrowing money. It's, it's a little bit different mechanism or vehicle to get money, right? And then when we're done with the project, we want to go to bonding, right? So then we're buying, people are buying the bonds and then that's how we get money to offset what we did. So, and then we have to pay the principal and interest on that, you know, moving forward. So basically you would be an investor, I want to buy so many bonds in this program, this, the school district. So you buy them whatever and then you're getting your interest in stuff over the years.
Good, that's a good explanation. And when we have the public sessions, maybe.
Yeah.
We can explain it as you did now. And what also, I, I think everybody has to realize is that prices go up for us. We see that in our homes, the electricity and gas and so on. And when we purchase something, they also go up for the school district. So we have to take that into consideration. Again, the bottom line, you've pulled rabbits out of the hat for the last few years as long as you've been doing this and I hope you do another one.
Yeah.
Because the, this is not a good time for many of our taxpayers in the district, as we, as we all know. So thank you for that presentation.
Mr. Bison?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, stop me at any time, Mike, and I can. On auditing, that was an 11% increase. That's all contractual because of contracts that we have with our school district auditors.
Yeah, well, we have our auditors are internal and then we also contract with some services with BOSI's, like the Gatsby and those types of reporting. So that's why the, the prices go up a little bit.
Okay. On the central data processing, what was the rationale there for that change?
What's the percent?
16.
I think because we added some other higher personnel in those departments where the salaries went up. And also some of the equipment needs that they need to maintain the infrastructure and their Chromebooks as well.
The BOSI's administrative costs threw me.
Yeah.
24%. Is that an estimate or?
That is an estimate, they did not give me the final number on that.
So that does not include their capital?
It does not, there's a second line is the capital.
I saw that and that's 40%. Is that because last year was the first year with that? Okay. Disability.
That also, wait, just, that also includes rent that would they, so if they rent space in other districts, like we have to share the rent cost so that some of it is rent, it's not all capital.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good. I see disability went down a great deal. That's based on what the district has incurred in that expense line in the past?
Yeah, so we look at who our provider is and then do we need, and we look at past trends of what the actual billing has been. So we're always trying to find a way to get it closer to what the actual trend is instead of just letting it, you know, you could just keep rolling and rolling and rolling, but I was trying to get it closer to what we're actually spending.
The reality.
Yeah.
Then the serial bonds, that was up. Those bonds are for?
Yeah, some of the projects that we just completed in the district. So when the, when the projects are complete, we go to bonding, right?
Right.
Yeah, so but when it's a ban, I'll go back a little bit to that. We can act, you don't know actually how much you're going to actually spend on a project, right? You have an idea, but until you are totally completed, you don't know the exact amount to go to bonding, right? So some of those could have been, we did some AC projects around the district. We've done some other playgrounds, we've done lighting, we've done a lot of different things and that's what that bonding is.
And I might have missed your point, where did the $9.5 million come from?
So back in 2021, we presented the Twin Towers project, right? We had a line up on the thing saying we needed to transfer unappropriate fund balance to cover the capital.
Unappropriate.
So through, when we did all that, the auditors up at facilities planning deemed that we didn't do it correctly enough. So last year, our fund balance went up tremendously because the money went back into fund balance. Now we need to take that money and put it back into the project.
And my final last thought, question, et cetera. I'm kind of surprised at the amount, and please, the folks in the audience, don't take this the wrong way. I'm kind of surprised at the amount of improvements for Maple Hill. That's a relatively new building. And we're talking what, almost 10 million?
Yeah.
Compared to, you know, 6 million.
Well, the renovation in the library is really just to reorganize the space. I don't, have you, have you been there lately and do you remember what Maple Hill looks like? It's kind of, it's in the center of the building and it's not really the way it's designed.
Okay.
Not the useful use of space. So we're looking at redesigning it, closing in the ceiling a little bit, putting some office spaces in there for like related services, just making it more functional. There's a lot of open space and unused space. So that's what we're looking at and the same at Mont Hagan. So they have a massive library and we're just looking at restructuring how that library actually functions with space. Yeah.
Don't do away with the libraries.
No, that's not doing that.
But the building hasn't had, over the 20 years, it hasn't had that much capital expenditure placed into it for upgrades or enhancements. So some of those things are, you know, original to the building and it's, you know.
Time and where, no, I understand, but I was just trying to compare with. And, and the restroom upgrades, that was another high item there?
Yeah, so they're looking at, read it, you want to speak about?
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the restroom design in the elementary schools outside of what exists in Presidential is, you know, a design that doesn't, you know, suit the healthy and safe operations of inside of a school. You know, it's going into an open bathroom with many stalls. And so, you know, you can't really have direct-to-student supervision inside bathrooms. And so what we're trying to do is bring those elementary schools that were brought online prior to what they know now about designing elementary schools, which is more similar to how Presidential Park is designed, and make those bathrooms, you know, more, operate more efficiently and more, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very, very much, I appreciate it. And again, you know, I, just curiosity and more from my own knowledge of, you know.
Those are great questions, yeah.
Yeah, well, thank. Yes, thank you very much, excellent presentation. Always appreciate the transparency. Just definitely want to encourage family members, people in the community, if you have any questions, to please come to those dates that you have put down and they can ask any questions or just email you. But excellent job as always, really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
I just want to add to that, I'm excited to have an opportunity to partner with the community member. I think she left, but I'll, you know, return her call and get back to her. And thank you, Dr. Johnson, for highlighting the need for increased attention to mental health and wellbeing. And, you know, highlight that Middletown because of this board stewardship and incredible commitment to mental health and wellbeing has 16 social workers pre-K through 12, which is what I'm aware of, the largest number of social workers in a school district our size. 22 psychologists, nine crisis interventionists and eight clinical counselors offered to our school community, not just students, offered through the Orange County Department of Mental Health. And the district provides funding for a wellbeing application for our staff called COM, which provides them with an opportunity to, you know, get respite from or support for positive wellbeing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bison?
Is the Maple Hill annex considered with the Maple Hill or is that a separate?
It's, it's, it's the same, but as far as building facilities is concerned, it's separate.
Okay.
And so right now, we're actually doing a boiler replacement. So that's, we're doing some work there, that's one of the things I just omitted. We're doing work at Truman Moon right now with the boiler, we've done a roof last year. Twin Towers obviously is under construction, you know, so we're not, we're not putting, you know.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, you know, clean it all up.
Yeah, I think like the important part about that explanation is that what we're trying to do is do work at the school buildings where we haven't maximized our aid. And so with those two projects that Mr. Tuttle is speaking about, those have really tapped into building aid. So these other buildings haven't had that work done. So the work strategically comes to the community at the least amount of, you know, cost with the maximizing the aid.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to Boyd Members Conference, professional development. Mr. Perino?
Thank you. Good webinar from our attorneys, tips and suggestions to avoid impartial hearings. And I'm not going to, the hours kind of getting late here, I'm not going to go over everything, but one of the suggestions I found very interesting, among others, was invest in reading programs. This was a big point. And the rationale is so your district will have alternative reading-based needs when they arise. When I'm doing the IEPs, I found that they have to, that what needs to be addressed are the fundamental and foundation skills. So this was a very good webinar and I'll go over this more in detail at a later time. But that was one of the suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Anyone else? All right, Board of Education Committee reports. We have any reports from the committees?
I'm going to ask that item A and B be tabled. Or B, I guess it's B and C. Rhett is not here this evening and I don't need if he needs to go into any details on, I think it's policy 8260.
Well, I'm here and, you know, it's something we.
Oh, were you there, okay.
Yes, I'm in the committee.
Sorry.
Ms. Romero. Yes.
Okay, sorry.
And I spoke with Mr. Rhett today.
I understand.
It was fine to move forward.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let's go with the Policy Committee. They have an approval to waive the first and second reading of the policy revisions recommended by the Policy Committee as presented, that's policy number 8260, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement. Do I have a second?
Second on that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any oppose? Any oppose? Got one opposed. 5-1, it passes. Policy Committee, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Board of Education's Policy Committee, the full board hereby approves to adopt the following policy with the nominal revisions reviewed by the Superintendent of Schools, policy 8260, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement. May I have a motion?
Second on that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any oppose?
Nay.
Motion pass. Thank you very much. Board Members Roundtable. Ms. Perino?
Yeah, just very briefly, Mitch, on this. You know, the, the point was brought up, what's going to happen if we lose aid if the, if, from Washington? We get quite a bit of Title IX money, do we not?
Title I.
Federal aid, right. Today, and I'm not being political here, I am just saying what has come over the airwaves lately, that the Department of Education, there's going to be an executive order abolishing that. And that is really, just to reassure everybody, it's not possible because the Department of Education was created by Congress. So I don't believe that it can be abolished. It can certainly be diminished by various executive orders. And, you know, there's a new ballgame in town now, whether you agree or disagree. The, the point, the point of this is that we have to advocate for our share of aid. You know, this country goes through periods when public education is in favor and then it goes the other way when public education is in disfavor. Individuals seem to believe that we're not doing our job. I don't believe that's the case. If you look at the graduation rates, I'm speaking about this district because I don't know other districts, but I know we are doing the job here. Our graduation rates are 94-plus percent. If you go look at the, the various boards in this building, you see students going to all the different types of colleges and universities in the nation. I see individuals coming out of these who are going to medical school and who are doctors, who are teachers, attorneys, on and on. who are teachers, attorneys, on and on. Our CTE program, BOSI's, I see young men and women coming out of these with all kinds of technical skills and skills enabling them to make good wages as tradesmen. So, you know, it's, public education's not all bad. Do we need to improve? Yes. We need to improve our foundation skills at the lower, lower grades. We need to improve sometimes at the, at some of our middle school levels, our offerings. But I think we're doing a pretty doggone good job with public education. So we'll just have to see what happens, and we'll have to bite the bullet, and hopefully, and I know as Mrs. Creeden and Kato and Mr. Tuttle always a few years ahead, planning and budget, budgeting. We have a good reserve, and we'll see where it goes. I, I don't want to diminish any services for the students, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bison?
I just want to qualify my negative vote. What I was looking for in the policies that we had to review that was sent to us previous was something like in Redder that, that I knew where the changes were. So I was a little confused, and I had to take my own ownership for that and not expressing that prior to this meeting, so.
Not a problem. Thank you very much for the clarity.
The superintendent has kind of given me a...
Clarification, yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms.
The clarification in finance, I, I'm getting, I'm understanding little by little. It's still, you know, iffy and all, but we're just a kid right here. After that, I'll, I'll say, just like the, seeing the programs for the kids at, the kids from K to like eight is very helpful to see still today. I do recommend a lot of people to go into the Star Lab. It's really fun. It's, I like seeing them in there. I was like, just a couple of weeks ago, I was in there, and I was, I was acting the same way, like, it's like so cool in there. It really is. After that, I don't think I have as many comments today.
That's okay. Ms.
Our Diamond and Pearls event will be on March eighteenth for young ladies, grade six through twelve. This coming event will feature connection and growth activities, including I Am a Boss for Budgeting, I Am Important, Healthy Habits, I Am Creative with Vision Boards, and I Am a Star with Karaoke. We are expecting a full house and a successful event. It is for females only. Please join us.
I was going to say, that doesn't include Mr. Perino.
How about diversity? Inclusion and equity, D E I.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Mr. Williams?
Yes, I just wanted to pass along some information that the Middletown Varsity Girls will be playing this Saturday at Monroe, and I was just assuming Pine Bush, I had a constituent reach out and say that Pine Bush was in a really tight game, so they don't know who they're playing yet, but they'll be playing this Saturday at noon at Monroe Woodbury High School. So congratulations once again, Mideast, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I just want to say, just commend everybody who presented this evening, everybody who's watching, and we're just going to continue to say, go Mideast. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No, no.
Second, I can't.
We are adjourned. Our next meeting will be Thursday, March twenty-twenty-five. Everyone have a great night. Thank you. Nice job, Mr. Williams.
Good job. Survived.
March twentieth, twenty, March twentieth, twenty-twenty-five.